Good evening, I am Mayor Mark Northrup. This is the Hudsonville City Commission, regular session dated March 11th, 2025. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Bullheist?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeBrey?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now is the time for a moment of silence. I had a recommendation from one of the commissioners that knowing that we're going into the planting season and they harvest six months later, he thought it be appropriate that if we had a moment of silence for all of our people who work in agriculture and in the farms and livestock business and we are blessed to have one of the most plentiful and bountiful food systems in the world and we often don't realize how fortunate we are. So, a moment of silence for all those that toil in the sun and on the soils. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. If you're here to speak as a member of the public, I see my good friend here tonight, Kurt, who's well-known in the, in politics in West Michigan, has a lengthy rap sheet, so to speak. Yes, I'm quite involved politically. But tonight, I come to you on behalf of the Ottawa County Road Commission. We'd like to thank you for supporting our millage this past summer, it's important source of income. If you look at the front cover there, you'll realize that that millage raises $7,818,000 a year, of which Hudsonville City gets over $160,000 to help with their roads. That county millage, all of the cities get their share sent to them. The townships, the road commission targets projects that are just in their townships. So that's how we use that funding. We have a budget of $38.8 million, which is paid forward through the gas tax and through that millage. We have 446 miles of primary roads and 1,272 miles of local roads. If you string those together to give you some idea, you'd go from Grand Haven to Key West, Florida. So if someday your road is not in best condition, think of how long the road system is and we can't be everywhere at all the time. As you see, resurfacing a road costs $300,000 a mile. Resurfacing with shoulders is $450,000. Bridges typically cost a million dollars apiece when we do them, so add up quickly. We've got page three and four. I've got projects in Jamestown that we'll be doing in the next three years and in Georgetown. More as information for you, but you'll see that we are doing a lot of projects in 2026. We're doing some road resurfacing and replacing roads. One of the things that we're really starting to work on is getting a strategic plan and what we'd like to see from Hudsonville is traffic studies, as we can incorporate them into how each road is being used, because the road doesn't stop at your borders, it continues on. You know, people, you know, fail to realize, when we rebuild a road, it lasts 20 years. But when we rebuild a bridge, it's for 50 years. So when we start looking at replacing bridges, we need to start thinking more right away, is it going to be a two-lane road, three lanes, four lanes? Are we going to want bike paths or pedestrian paths included in it? Do we want to be able to put paths underneath the bridges that are some of our busy roads that people can, you know, navigate without having to cross the road? So that's some of the information we're seeking from you, but we are looking to open communication with the local units of government and we'll be by every six months to update you on projects and get your input. If you have any major projects that you have developments that you need to see roads improved, we'd like to know about so that we can work together and get those roads addressed. Zealand City and Zealand Township, we are looking at widening Riley possibly and fixing the crossing at 80th and Chicago Drive. So that's one place that we are looking at working with several units of government for improvement. So if you have any questions, I'm available or you got my phone number there, you can get me anytime you'd like. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kurt. On behalf of the City of Hudsonville, thank you for your continued support and for being a loyal colleague to, to me and to the Commission over the years. So these things don't go unnoticed, so I appreciate your continued support. I'll make sure the clerk makes his part of the, the minutes here for, for us so that and I'll make sure that these will get circulated with our supervisor for DPW so he's aware of what that funding looks like. We also work with you on the water and sewer. That's one of our other responsibilities and we're getting ready for that Wyoming pipeline. There's been plenty of discussion on that one. Thanks and have a great evening, Kurt. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else in the public choose to address the Commission? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are four: city commission, regular session dated February 11th, city commission work session minutes dated February 25th, planning commission meeting minutes dated February 19th, and then the accounts payable reviewed and approved by the finance committee and the city manager. There's two there, payment of the bills of a little over $700,000, and I'm sure you'll discuss that a little bit when we're, when we have our Treasury report, it's a rather large amount, and then the standard ACH amount, which is our, our salaries that get paid through that process. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
And moving support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items passes, thank you. Moving on to departmental reports, February Public Safety, Cisco reports, the fire department is up first, Jason Moore, it's Captain Moore, right? Is it correct?
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief, okay.
Good evening. Steve is helping Mount Pleasant at a fire investigators conference, so he's getting some much-needed education so he can better support the city. So I am here. So in the month of February, we had 54 calls, brings our year total to 132, so averaging just over two calls a day, so we're definitely on a great pace this year. One call of note, we had a motorhome fire in a driveway on Barker a couple weeks ago due to some quick response times, we got it knocked down before it impeded on the house, so it was a good, good day there. As far as training goes, we had our annual ice rescue training over at Hudson Reform Church and their waterway there, so we got to utilize our boat and do a lot of practice for those scenarios, which hopefully we don't need anymore this year. And then we had two of our firefighters go down to Kalamazoo for a specialized extrication class, which was sponsored by Hearst, which is where we got our extrication tools from a couple years ago, so they assisted in getting our guys in there. So, busy, busy month again. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Jason? Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant DeVries. Your first time up here, welcome.
It's an intimidating group. Thank you.
We don't, we don't set out to be intimidating.
Again, my name is Lieutenant Ryan DeVries. I'm, I would say pinch-hitting tonight for Sergeant Tamiga during our monthly in-service training, which he was at tonight. So just to cover February a little bit, total of calls, 162. We're hoping that the crash numbers continue to decline with the white stuff going away. Also to add, as we continue, as it's been in the media a little bit, our Axon body camera project, which also includes our fleet, which also includes our cars assigned here in Hudsonville City, are now being added frontward facing cameras on all patrol cars and then also a camera in the rear patrol seat. So again, we're continuing in that project through the end of March. We're looking forward to the technology. You will have the same technology here in the city and all of our patrol cars and we look forward to that, so. And then just to note, it is now that we're in March, March reading month, so it's kind of cool, Deputy Potman in the schools is spending a little bit more time at the younger levels, doing some readings to students to get involved and be a part of their class. So happy to take any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity and also been a pleasure working with the department heads on Mondays, a great group of people and it's been, been a pleasure and I look forward to those meetings every week.
Any questions for Lieutenant? I, I just, I gotta ask you, on this graph here, I just stared for quite a while, so we had 42 crashes in the month of January and we went to 17 in the month of February?
Yes.
The, the scale there seems a little off to me, but...
A little bit, yes, a little bit.
But that is, that is a true number, 42 to 17.
Correct.
So all driven by the snow.
A lot of it is going to be the snow and then you're probably also, you know, dealing with a little bit of the influx of the highway with what involves with this, with the city there and that short section, but um, yes, we, a side note, I believe last month we might have been, who, I think besides the state police, we might have been number two in the state for crash reports for the county. So we, we had a busy, busy month and of course, all of you were in this, in the city here was a part of that as well. So we'll see the decline and then we kind of see a trend in different types of crimes as the weather gets warmer and, and the workflow just keeps coming in more and more as, you know, and we get right into summer and it's non-stop, so.
I just also want to comment, I really appreciate the enforcement activity on 32nd because I routinely see people drive 50 to 60 miles on that 35 stretch.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it just gets, it gets so dangerous for the community when people so excessively speed on 32nd.
Yeah, I believe we had some correspondence out from our Traffic Services Sergeant and Deputy Tuttle continues to lead the way.
Thank him for us.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Lieutenant? Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's time. Have a good week.
Dave?
Good evening. Well, February is often a quiet month for my department. As you can see, it's a pretty short report. Month is even quieter than the report indicates because of the two things on there, one of them was canceled. So, but our, our staff meeting, we did a review of our standard, standard operating guidelines and this is a document that basically for all the different types of scenarios that we deal with that are, things where we have basic principles that we follow, we document all that. That way we know, okay, here's how we run traffic for a planned event, here's how we, right down to if the light is out at Chicago Drive and 32nd, we have that documented, here's how we handle that intersection. And what we started doing is annual reviews of that, so we can make sure that that is always fresh and useful. And that's what we did in the department meeting in February. It had some really good stuff come out of that. Traffic direction training was canceled because of the weather. Weather was, I had a couple people constantly, hey, are we really going to do this because it's all, all the way out at Fillmore and we were training the, anybody in the county? And I was talking to the county leadership, I said, you know, I'm the wrong person to ask because I've gone to the movies in worse weather than this. So we did a kind of a collective discussion and decided we would put it off. I will make sure that it gets rescheduled because my team needs it, it's required for us every, at least every two years for every person on the team. Because I'm the instructor, I can make sure that, that we get it scheduled. And so there'll be a session coming up probably in April, if not April, then certainly in May, before we get into our, our heavy traffic direction. Any questions?
Dave, I see in the, in your report here, AEROMED landing zone setups, how many LZs do we have in our city or where are they?
So what this is, it's not predefined LZs, it's if we need an LZ, and we've been trained by AEROMED, it's been several years we've been trained by AEROMED of, okay, here's what they look for. Like daytime, I think they want 125 feet square and they want us to establish a perimeter because we want to make sure nobody gets into that, that space. Nighttime, 200 feet square with vehicles with headlights to shine in the LZ so they know where, where they're going. Has other things in there like if there's an obstruction near the LZ, put a vehicle under it or somehow, you know, highlight that obstruction. So it's not a predefined LZ, it's how would we go set one up in the field? And that's the way that the fire department primarily does that, which way that we can support them if, if they need the extra, extra staff on that.
Interesting. Any other questions for Dave? Thanks, Dave. Have a pleasant evening.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the city treasurer's monthly report, you're, you're up, Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Attached is the treasurer's report. We brought in $80,400 on the general fund this last month and expended $291,000. You can see the trend in there. Last year, you can see two big jumps, one in expense and one in revenue and that was for purchase and sale of property, so that's why that was larger last year. And then we made $52,513 in interest last month, so...
You know I was going to ask.
Yes, I did. So we're still doing well with the interest there. Let's see.
Do you think, do you see that continuing or are you going to see that fall off?
Um, I see it continuing for a little while. We just met with West Michigan Bank today and they're, you know, very eager to maintain the city's business and do what they can to be competitive in the market, so it's a lot, lot better than when I first got here. So, you know, they're, they're doing their part and, you know, wanting to be partners with us versus us just sitting there. So, yeah, that's, they've been great to work with, they're always helpful, so, yeah, very pleased that, you know, it's reciprocal both ways now.
Are you going to do the grant report? Is that you?
I can't, no, nothing's changed.
No additions there for last one. Okay, very well. Moving on to the Economic Development Director Report. Why do I have it on there? Is that...
That's the grant tracker.
That is the grant tracker, okay.
I'm going to find it.
Okay. Moving on to administration new business, there is a C cadet lease, this was, Andrew and I spoke about this, was just a legal lease requirement, it's a no-cost lease, but it has to be done formally. Andrew, you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. We submitted it to the legal council and they approved it and passed it on.
Boilerplate stuff.
More administrative than anything. It's the same as the MOU that we approved last month and it's in a lease format for liability reasons.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve C cadet lease as presented.
I'll second that. The movie supported, roll call please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number six, fee schedule update, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the updates to the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 fee schedule as presented.
Support. Then moving supported, Tyler, was there a memo on this?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was three items that'll be adjusting the master fee schedule. Okay. One of the reasons, just a reminder, we update the master fee schedule in June every year as part of our normal budgeting process. However, there are times when we want to update these mid-year because brownfield rentals are coming in the spring, we want to make sure that we have accurate information confirmed and approved by the city commission. If you recall, last year, Bob was working with the schools and the rep to come up with the fee and that's something we're going to continue to evaluate, the numbers, inflation and cost of materials makes it a bit more volatile, but you see an update there. The right-of-way permits, as you can see around the city, we're with MetroNet and fiber, a lot of right-of-way activity right now. We're doing eight, very large amount of mist digs. We are, I won't say we're struggling to keep up, but we are keeping up. As such, having your hand on this is very important. Then the hybrid use, just correcting the typo there.
Any questions?
I have one. Mr. Manager, who is enforcing violations of said issues, said, these fee schedules?
So with the fee schedule, a lot of it, if you were to look at it, would be department-based. So as it relates to right-of-way, Bob would be the observer of the situation, but then the planning and zoning department would follow the ordinance or the code in place. Usually it's a letter, there's a waiting period. It's one of the challenges, it's codified in state law of being able to enforce. So as we've talked about in our last work session, one of the handful of strategies I've thought of is we need to be quicker with our initial stage of enforcement in knowing that it's a process.
I think we all agree there's a work in process here to improve city ordinance attention to detail. And I think we've asked Tyler to come up, come back to us with some, some options for us to, to reexamine about how we do code enforcement, ordinance enforcement, so. I don't probably, we would probably say until one, April or May at least, I would think.
Conceptually, I'll have the ideas in April, but if my recommendation will be murder impactful to the budget, then we'll probably have discussion in May to look to...
At the special in the last session. There's a motion on the floor? Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, fee schedule is updated, motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, commercial rehab district request, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 25-1806, setting a public hearing for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district for the Landings at Rush Creek project.
Support. Moving supported, we have Kurt Perschbacher here. If you want to maybe come up to the podium, so if there's any questions on any of these technical details, Kurt, then you can certainly answer them. There's really two motions here. The first one establishes the district and the second one is a resolution to support it with the brownfield plan, is that correct?
Correct.
I think we've talked about this at our last work session, about the need to have this rehab district put in place. Do either one of you want to speak to this a little bit as to why it's necessary? This involves the pro, the parcel behind signatures that abuts Georgetown Township and it is called Rush Creek Landings. It's worked its way through the planning commission, obviously the planning commission did not look at the, the financials, but now we're at a point where the financials come into the picture, particularly regards to what kind of incentives the city can offer to make that plan happen. The, and Jeremy, I think we got to, what, 84 units? These are single bedrooms with two double-stall garages underneath. We did quite a bit of work to make sure there's plenty of green area and walkability. I would see that most of this traffic out of this, this development would probably occur down the Port Sheldon corridor and not down the Balsam Creek, Balsam corridor into 32nd. Anything to add to that, where, what, what the need is for this district?
Yeah, of course. First, obviously, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you, thank you guys for really evaluating the tools you have in your toolkit. And just as a heads up, for Tyler and his staff, the city is great to work with as a consultant as we bring forward these projects. All projects are different, especially as we enter the housing arena. Building costs are higher, interest rates are higher, so we have to utilize different mechanisms to make projects happen. And this is a, a project that you don't see very often, like the mayor mentioned, it's a once, basically one-bedroom townhome with a two-stall garage. It's expensive to build at lowest density, but it gives the community a project that they don't have. So when we were evaluating the performa from the developer, we were trying to figure out at what point he needed his incentive to make the project pencil so it could lend on it. And with his eligible activities, we looked at stacking the two incentives. So the property is eligible for a PA 210, which abates or essentially freezes the local taxes for 10 years. So during that period, you can still capture the state millages. And beyond the tax abatement is the brownfield tip reimbursement. So essentially, it, it pulls the whole incentive package to 19 years, give or take for the developer, and that's what was needed in this performa to make the project go forward. So we needed the 210 and the brownfield incentive to make the project pencil. So that's the need for the, the incentive on the PA 210 because we needed that as part of a whole package to make his debt service coverage ratio work.
Kurt, when you refer to "we," are you speaking on behalf of the county, your employer, or the DDA?
So, I guess in all transparency, I do wear a lot of hats in this community. I'm a DDA board member and Ottawa County VRA board member and also a brownfield consultant. Today, the project's not in the DDA, so I don't really come here as a DDA. For the Ottawa, and, and we talked about this in the last project, is because the City of Hudsonville doesn't have their own brownfield authority, this will go to the county authority eventually if the city council recommends it. So at the Ottawa County level, I actually won't be at the meeting to approve it, I will be on vacation, but I would have recused myself because I don't want there to be any transparency issues with what my role is. So I am here on behalf of the developer, the developer's out of town, you know, he submitted a memo to the city manager Tyler with a little bit more details. But when I mention "we," I'm the, the brownfield consultant helping to make the project happen for the developer. But I am a brownfield expert, so I can answer both sides of the coin.
So you're really here in kind of four different roles?
I wear a lot of hats.
A lot of hats.
But this one is primarily, because we're not in the DDA on this project, I'm more speaking on behalf of the developer.
Any questions for Kurt on this motion that's on the floor right now? Hearing none. You want to speak?
Yeah, just a, a quick thought. In, in working with Kurt and our friends at Ottawa County, we're able to pull some data that I just wanted to share with the commission and the public quickly. Roughly 24% of all households in Ottawa County are single adults with no children at home. 37% of all households are couples without children at home. But the fact that I find the most interesting is that 89% of all housing stock in Ottawa County has two or more bedrooms, 76% three or more. So when we talk about unique housing, workforce housing, a unique housing opportunity, the data represents what, you know, what we're seeing and what we've discussed. And I just think that's something to bring up because in the master plan, our current master plan, the 2030 master plan, you know, we talk about diverse housing needs. And this is an area where obviously, in this current economic climate, incentives are needed, but it's, I just think it's important to realize as we talk to members of the public, it's not a run-of-the-mill, high-density. It is unique to the area, not just the city. And in some of the leadership from some of the larger corporations in the area, this housing, workforce housing, childcare are, are the two top conversations, which we all know is nothing new. But I just wanted to share those facts with you, Mr. Mayor and the, and the Commission because I did find that very interesting.
I would like to add, I'm excited about the project because I've had some conversation with individuals, single adults but are in the end of their career or a little more towards the senior level and are single or, or without children. And it offers them a, a nice option, especially the dual garages. So I think it's a nice blend for our area and I would be excited to see it happen and if somebody interested in one.
Mr. Mayor, can I add another question? Kurt, is, is there support for this type of project at the county brownfield level or, I guess, how does that relationship work? If you could clue me in on that?
Yeah, so the way that the county, the county authority can't move until the city moves. So what we did in this case is we actually met with the county board last month at their brownfield meeting and presented the specifics of the project, what the investment would be, the timeframe of reimbursable, not for approval but to gauge interest. And at that point, good conversation was had about the amount of units that were being locked in, but all in all, the, the conversation was good. So we felt comfortable bringing it from this board. And then with this approval, it will go to the county board meeting next Thursday, the 20th. So they take into consideration the locals, if, if the community wants the project, that's part of their consideration when they're looking at the whole project. So initial conversations have been good with the county. I spoke with the director, Becky Huddendaugh, earlier today, just to make sure she didn't have any initial comments. The plan was submitted to the brownfield authority a couple weeks ago, some members have already started reviewing it and Becky hasn't received any comments yet, so that'll go in front of them next week. The developer will be at that meeting too, so. And then beyond that, if it approves, it gets approved past the brownfield authority level, then it goes... And then beyond that, if it approves, it gets approved past the brownfield authority level, then it goes to Ottawa County Finance Committee, and then to the board commissioners ultimately.
I think we'll get through all those layers, I'm pretty confident.
Yeah, with this project, um, it fits the need for the community, uh, public support, we haven't had any concerns with that so far, and at this point, we're very optimistic. We've, and initially, on top of that, we had a conversation with Mishtha, who's the regulatory agency that will be reviewing and approving the state tax capture, um, about the generics of the plan. They loved the product, and they were in favor of, of moving forward with it. So we've had a lot of good communication with our different agencies, and we're anticipating good news.
Any other questions for Kurt? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullhays?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, note that that was unanimous, moving on to the final motion, um, for the brownfield plan concerns, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-five dash one-eight oh seven, requesting support from Ottawa County and the Ottawa County Brownfield Authority for a brownfield redevelopment project for the Landings at Rush Creek.
Second motion. Been moved and supported, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullhays?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and I think Kurt, it's pretty important that you know that the support here at the commission level, additionally also at the planning commission level, and I would suspect also at the DDA level, is going to be fully unanimous. I know nobody in the community that is vehemently opposed to this. Uh, the only issue may be some of the residents in the Georgetown and the high-density housing on their side, but, um, this is high-density adjacent to high-density, so I don't think there's much room there for them to, to have any issues with NIMBA, not my backyard, but please know.
And I'll communicate that to, to Becky Huddinga later tonight, actually, I'll just give her an information, so. Obviously, I appreciate the, the community really evaluating incentives, they're very important, and you guys do a very good job, I sit in front of a lot of communities that don't, so.
Thanks Kurt, I think we have DDA, uh, next Wednesday, right? So, see you Wednesday. Uh, moving on to the final city manager's report, you're up there, Tyler.
Please, Mr. Mayor. Alright, um, just a reminder that, um, yeah, just a reminder, um, that we will be meeting on March twenty-fifth at six P M for a special meeting. There will be discussion items on this, but it's actually looking like we're going to have several action items, and they're good actions. Excuse me?
Six P M?
Six P M, sorry, yep. Uh, dinner will be provided, um, I will do my best to give you, uh, the information, um, some of the information in advance, you can prep, there should be, uh, nothing major there, but we do have some discussion items as part of this meeting too, and as the mayor likes to say, we'll be cognizant of time there, so, um, save the date, March twenty-fifth, um, and we'll let you know the location, once we, uh, hammer out the final details, I'll get what the mayor decides, we're up here in the dais, we're downstairs.
Will that, will that be six P M usually?
Six P M. We have a personnel committee meeting on March twenty-sixth at seven-thirty A M, so just a reminder to the commissioners on the personnel committee.
What time is that?
Seven-thirty.
A M.
A M, there's a difference there.
Oh, I got it on the calendar.
And there's a distinction in Corporate Grove and Corporate Exchange project and Thirty Second Avenue project. Uh, strategic planning, want to thank you all, uh, and thank staff, uh, for coming in on a Saturday from eight to one, uh, with our planner and vendor, uh, really appreciate it, I thought we had a great dialogue, and one thing that I personally took from that meeting is, um, we are on the same page, and we are very fortunate to be on the same page. How we get there, there's a lot of good thoughts, and I don't think, uh, anyone's right or wrong, um, but the ship is sailing in the same direction. That makes my job easier to serve you, uh, as well for staff, and I think it's great for the community, it's a testament to your stability and the relationship that we have with staff. So once again, thank you everyone who attended, um, I'm going to work on collecting and formatting our thoughts, uh, for, not going to go as far as saying a presentation, um, but, uh, an update to the strategic plan, um, we'll look for your approval. As of right now, I'm targeting the May thirteenth meeting, uh, there's a chance with it, with us being, uh, the middle of the budget process right now, that we could kick that back to June, um, I'll work to, to get that, get that to you. Um, at our special meeting, we'll have, uh, staff is working in conjunction with the Outdoor Discovery Center on two grant applications through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, uh, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, as well as the Recreation Passport Grant, uh, program. Clerk Grubbin posted the necessary, well, not posted, got a whole local paper for the posting notice.
Yep.
Up with regards to these grants.
It's posted on the thing too, and our website.
It's important to know that all grants are different, this one requires a published special hearing, so we're just checking those boxes, um, and working closely with our friends at the O D C, uh, as we realize an April first submission. On the grant front, I'm at a meeting.
Could be as much as four hundred thousand, I think, is the number that they're targeting, so, pretty exciting.
Yeah, we have a, yeah, thank you Commissioner, um, for the Recreation Passport Grant, um, up to a hundred and fifty thousand, and for a maximum request for the Land and Conservation Fund, up to five hundred thousand. So, uh, those teams, and they've really appreciate your leadership here on, on O D C's end as well, um, we're working with Nate, who is your?
Uh, Grants Manager.
Grants Manager, uh, Jacob and Sarah have been working, so it's, again, it's a really cool collaborative effort, uh, and what we hope to be a special realization. With collaboration comes its own challenges, um, Commissioner and I had a meeting last week to discuss what the, what the agreement between the O D C and the city looks like, because these elements are, are very important as we, as we pursue grants.
So, so the maximum amount is a hundred and fifty plus five hundred, so it's six fifty?
Yep.
And then the ARPA money that's being held is how much, right now?
Just about three-quarters of the grant.
Three-quarters, so we are well on the way, it sounds like, if we get these grants, and I think we're pretty competitive, I would think.
And we're in a strong spot to match those grants without necessarily being, uh, the operating match from the city, because we have the operating, uh, or the ARPA.
Good.
So we will, we'll discuss those more with more specific details, um, at our meeting on the twenty-fifth. Met with Don DeVries and, uh, Bob Miller yesterday, um, maybe I should put my foot in my mouth here, but it's looking like we're going to go after another Michigan, uh, M dot T E F, CAT F, uh, grant opportunity. Bob's collecting some information, it's looking like, um, we'll have your, uh, March twenty-fifth meeting that will present two potential, uh, options to pursue for grants. There's pros and cons with one application, there's pros and cons with another one, um, and after talking about it, we want your input to see, um, where we want to, uh, you know, pursue the grant, because we really love one grant application. So we'll talk about the March twenty-fifth meeting, um, and again, that's, uh, M dot T E F, CAT F, uh, the Corporate Grove Drive, Corporate Exchange, was, uh, M dot, uh, T E F, CAT B. Uh, so different, uh, funding mechanism in terms of, uh, what's allowed, but we'll talk more about that at your March twenty-fifth meeting. Uh, on Monday, our new Terrace Square manager, Brenna Klink, uh, starts, um, really excited, uh, to, to get her on board, um, and really shore up our team there. Um, I will look to get here, get her before you all at, uh, April eighth for an introduction, um, but she starts Monday, and we're excited. Want to give a shout-out to Andrew, um, a lot of bunch of meetings right now, like Andrew, really appreciate the conversations, sidebar conversations we've had. Our department heads, just to give a little, uh, idea of what it looks like behind the scenes. We start talking about the next fiscal year, I think this year I waited for the third week of July, so we were three weeks into the fiscal year, already starting to take notes and plan for this fiscal year. We took the capital improvement plan that, uh, we discussed at your January meeting, um, we'll be discussing that there, March twenty-fifth meeting too, to make sure everyone's on the same page here. But, if you, one thing, and, um, Finance Director Smith made a great point at the end of our strategic planning meeting on Saturday, is that with the Village Green being a priority, um, a budget is a reflection of our priorities. And so, like, Andrew and I had a quick conversation today about the way that we're going to approach the budget before we recommend it to you guys, with the idea that we need more money than less. And we're not a hundred percent sure how much we need, but we need to be intentional, um, in our budget for this next fiscal year, and we look to realize, uh, property acquisition of the Village Green. So Andrew, thank you, really appreciate that, one thought that I'll say in front of the city commission, I sent an email to you last week, with the insert of some federal funding grants, such as the C N A C grant, uh, congestion, mitigation, and air quality, uh, that allowed us to do the left turn lane at New Holland. That's one of the grants that, uh, potentially is under review, uh, by the Trump administration. And so, um, had a conversation with the Kent County Administrator Day, Al Vandenberg, um, talking about funding, and through my networks and, and talking to Al, we seem to believe that right now, all indications are that the large majority, if not all, the transportation funding, uh, will still be available. Nonetheless, that is in the back of our minds, where we can pivot if a certain opportunity was not realized. So, we're not spelling out all of our federal and state funding, um, we lack the capacity for that, but it's a thought we have in our minds in case things changes, um, from the old. So Andrew, thank you for all your efforts, I know there's a lot more to go, but really appreciate the conversations we've had so far. Uh, just a couple more.
Uh, is, just in terms of who we've talked to regarding some of that federal funding, has Congressman Heisinger, is he in the loop on how that might affect his, his district nearby, or, um, the other folks from that level, the federal level, Senator, uh, senators?
Yeah, sure, uh, great question, um, so, we had a Grand Valley Metro Council meeting last week, um, and through the, the leadership of the many municipalities that make up the Metro Council, there's been several conversations, uh, with the elected officials, and right now, they're asking questions too, um, because everything is on the table, uh, but some things are not on the table, but it's not formal yet. Uh, but the early indication is that when it comes to transportation, um, infrastructure-related, uh, federal grant opportunities, that we're, I, I believe the general belief is that those are going to be protected, but until it's a done deal, that, um, you know, we won't know. A lot of questions right now, but I think we all feel a little bit better than we did perhaps three weeks ago.
Thank you.
When I get more information, I'll be sure to share. Uh, spring newsletter, final draft being reviewed right now, look for the newsletter to be mailed out, uh, in the next two weeks. Office restructuring, um, as we talked about, our workshop is underway, there's fresh paint, uh, carpet's going to be installed, I believe sometime, uh, this week. Uh, we've ordered, uh, some equipment, and just a reminder that that's to get our Terrace Square staff, our Chamber staff, all centrally located, my closer housing team is, uh, doing a phenomenal job, and, uh, we're excited to get everyone comfortable and get them working away. I do have a hand, a small handful of project updates for you, um, not the best of news on this one, but in regards to the, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand of local agency project money, um, that we're made aware of, um, in January of this year. The Thirty Second Avenue resurface project from Berry Street to New Holland, the design engineering is done, and we are ready to go to the state letting. However, uh, as I mentioned last month, uh, we need NEPA and CHIPA review, uh, those are, uh, historical agencies that look over historical data, and also environmental data, and act, want to make sure that there's no species or, um, ancient relics that need conservation. We made, the engineers made contact with them, did not get the response that we wanted, um, it, the frustrating, uh, position that I sit in is that we're talking about curb and existing sidewalk, the footprint's not going to change, but because of this funding process, it still must go through, uh, these two agencies. So, what does this do? We're ready now, design engineering is done, like I said, we've missed the May letting, um, as of right now. In order to hit the June letting, we must submit by March twenty-first, that means that the NEPA and CHIPA reviews must be completed. If it's not completed by March twenty-first, and we're forced to go to the July letting, we won't have the project on Thirty Second completed, uh, during the summer, when the schools are in break. With a limited, uh, project, uh, window in the summer, with the late funding, and again, this is funding we didn't believe we had, um, I appreciate the city commission, um, you know, uh, and, and Andrew freeing up the money, Bob's efforts, but it's out of our control at this point. It's looking like a two-to-three week project, um, but it will be at the start of school, um, I'm having deja vu from the road diet. But, when I get more information, I'll get that to you, but we are good with everything on our end, we're just waiting for, um, these agencies to give us their final report.
Are those both state agencies?
Yes, yep, and they're.
Can we call on Roger McTrey?
Uh, we are, we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, at your March twenty-fifth, uh, meeting, I'm hoping to file, have the final, um, deed and resolution for you, uh, to, uh, turn over the property, uh, that sliver property with regards to Berry Street to an adjacent property owner. Talked with the attorney last week, um, and there were some eyes at that, teeth across, but I think we'll be able to put the, the hat on this on the twenty-fifth. Um, Highland Lift Station, this is on our C I P, uh, we're fifty percent done with the engineering, um, it's looking like we'll be able to, or, it's looking like we're going to replace the wet wells, I guarantee you can speak to that probably than I can, um, only a ten thousand dollar savings with the old ones, um, so we're working on engineering there. This has been on the C I P for two to three years, and I was very firm with our engineers that we need to get this done, um, with regards to the, uh, lift station replacement. Then, uh, two more, Corporate, Corporate Grove Drive and Corporate Exchange, uh, the design is ninety percent done, it'll be done by the end of this week, um, we'll look to put that to bid, uh, fairly soon with a bid opening in April. And, we believe that we'll be paving in June, according to the contractor, right now, that is subject to change, but, um, appears to be, uh, good shape there, um, when we have the bid date, I'll be sure to, uh, let the city commission know when the bid opening is, excuse me, and, uh, we'll look to move forward with an award of the project there. Then, uh, finally, in terms of, uh, project updates, uh, the city received the, uh, we had a bid opening, um, February twenty-sixth with regards to the school app parking lot, just a reminder, that's, uh, I believe forty-three spaces, two A D A spaces, and two, uh, E V charging stations, along with some decorative light posts. We'll be talking about this, I'm looking for, uh, the bid award at your March twenty-fifth meeting. The DDA will need to approve the project as well, they purchased the, the land, um, and again, we're talking about the property, um, that is just south of the McAlpine, the former McAlpine chiropractic office. The DDA purchased the property in February of twenty-three for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and they pledged a hundred and eighty thousand towards the project. Um, as I, I brought up to city commission in past meetings at, um, our discussion, I do believe it'd be appropriate for the city commission to pitch in for the project. Uh, the good news with regards to this is the engineer's estimate was two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, and the low bid came out at roughly one-hundred-and-eighty-seven.
What a, what a big difference, I know, it's a big delta.
Yeah, um.
It's a change.
Yeah, so very fortunate there, anytime we have a bid opening these days, uh, my fingers are crossed, I do say a little prayer, um, hoping for good numbers. But the DDA will look to approve their end of it on the nineteenth, the city will look to approve their end of it on the twenty-fifth. With that being said, um, this is part of the Terrace Station Brownfield Plan, I've been working with Kurt to get you a schedule, and money's realized and timelines. Kurt, you've been awesome, I am still ciphering through that, so I make sure I present accurate data to you, uh, but there will be a reimbursement schedule as part of this, because we did put it in the TIF plan, and we're fortunate to do that with the location of that next to Terrace Station. So how much money, when, how, um, maybe you come up a formal agreement with the DDA, uh, in case we're not here during the, uh, during the reimbursement for the TIF capture, uh, but that's coming, uh, through the, uh, through the queue. I did talk to Don yesterday, and we still believe that we'll have substantial completion by June first, um, in advance of the new farmer's market. Yeah, it could be close, uh, for that first week, um, but, uh, we're moving forward.
So that has to go to DDA this week, next?
It'll go to the DDA on the nineteenth, and then the city commission on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, you're prob, will you be the acting director, or chairperson, I assume? Then we have, then we have to have a way to elect you too for a new chairperson?
Yep, we'll be electing officers, and I know that, uh, Mr. Groth, Jacob and I had a conversation with regards to, uh, Phil Conings', uh, potential resignation, um, looking with, with you officers, and, uh, Jacob and I have talked about this, and that'll be in the DDA's packet. This is interesting, because it's collaborative in nature, so you have two entities, I'm looking to approve the project, uh, approve the, uh, the amounts of money necessary, but it's a little bit interesting, because there's a reimbursement schedule now between two entities, so how do we decipher all that? We, we want to get it right, that way the, the DDA and the city are on the same terms of what that reimbursement looks like.
I'm sure Jack's loyalty is, will be conflicted but fair, as always, right, Jack? Thank you.
There's always more, uh.
I'm sure Jack's loyalty is, will be conflicted but fair, as always. Right, Jack? Thank you.
There's always more, but I'll put that in my weekly report. If there's any questions or comments, I can get those at this time.
Hearing none. Thank you, Tyler. Good work. Tyler and I attended a conference this morning. It was, I think, very informative. A little disappointed in the Speaker of the House's presentation. I had some notes that put a lot of people ill at ease. He turned a apolitical meeting into a political distasteful conversation in front of people that was just, made me feel really ill at ease. And I had some texts from colleagues that felt the same way, so. Those of you who don't know Matt Hall, I know him quite well. Not necessarily surprised, but still disappointed. But there's a lot of good information about housing and the new trends in cities. A lot of talk about homeless, homelessness and how to address homelessness, which fortunately we don't have an issue in our city, but we could someday.
I thought the discussion of one of the speakers on the Brownfield TIF.
And the Brownfield TIF, that was the other one, it was very appropriate.
And how Minus Paws are leveraging this as an incentive and it's being used and it's still new, but Grand Rapids is very active, using the same financial mechanisms that we are further economic development.
Of course, on a much bigger scale, but it's still the same, same mechanism, same thought process. Very well, anything, Tobin?
Nothing to add.
Dave?
Yeah, just grateful again for the strategic planning session and for getting to work with you all in that. I've had the privilege of attending some other public meetings and just appreciate the way you all let me be myself and express my opinions and I just appreciate the working relationship we have. Thank you.
Dave, you attended a Grand Haven School Board meeting last night. You said that went?
Past midnight.
How many hours, six hours?
I can't do the math, I'm still sleeping. Good attendance, have people that want to come up.
Was there a filibuster?
Yeah, there was.
Six hours.
Everybody knows how I feel about law meetings, so I pity those that had to sit through that, six hours of ranker. There's typically people just repeating the next person's sentence. I appreciate the consideration all of us have on this dais for each other's time. Jeremy, anything?
Larry?
I just wanted to echo what Dave said. I really appreciate the time we put into the strategic plan. I'm a diehard supporter of left houses and I think it is something that we can be proud of and something we can show the progress we've made because of it over the years. Thank you, everyone's participation, especially the efforts the staff has made.
Staff did a great job, thank you. Larry, there's a birthday next week on the 19th, correct? Whose birthday would that be?
You only have 40 minutes?
Yep.
Birthday is still a big deal, Larry, so happy birthday on behalf of the City Council and all your years of service. Dan?
Okay.
Jack?
Larry and I will probably be going to MML together next week.
I'll go on Tuesday, but on Wednesday, we have DDA.
Yeah, well, I'll be going on Tuesday, not Wednesday, so looking forward to that. And then also for last Saturday, kudos to the department heads and the staff who were there. We have just a tremendous amount of talent. I think we're all pulling in the same direction. We have various opinions, ideas, strengths, and that helps the whole process, but I think we're all kind of moving in the same direction, you know, with all our oars in the water going the same way, which helps. And then with the strategic plan, the master plan, I think us as a group and us as the commission, setting that tone really gives them their marching orders and I think that's really important because otherwise, as was said, they go to work every day and it's really easy for 40 hours to pass and get a lot done, but not maybe hit the things that are the top priority. So I think it's in our best interest and our responsibility to give them that direction that they need to accomplish the bigger goals. So thanks to everybody who was there.
What was that, Jack?
I've been told to mention the special election that I'm not thrilled to hold, but ISD is holding an election on May 6th.
I got a card in the mail. Did everybody else get a card?
Yep.
So if you get a chance, it's the renewing of the millage there. And as a father who raised two children that had to go through the ISD process for special ed, you probably would all can appreciate my support to those millages that helped those in our community that definitely need the special education. So that will come before us, but May?
May 6th. If you have questions or anything, contact the ISD. I don't know anything about what they're doing.
Are we just going to do voting one place here? Is that, we still got?
One and two will be downstairs like a normal may election and then word three at the church like every election.
Do you have to do early voting on top of it?
Oh, I'm so happy.
Okay.
Anything else needs to be brought before the commission? Any final words? I want to thank everybody for your continued support and thank you for making, being the mayor is a privilege and an honor and quite frankly, it's almost easy, I hate to say that, but having people of your caliber on this dais and the staff just makes a real joy and it's just a good, it's good, Tyler. It's just really good. And Tobin, we had that conversation today, so thank you very much.
Thank you for serving as mayor. Hearing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I don't need a motion, I'm always told, but we are adjourned.